Good evening and welcome to the August 20th, 2018, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, as you can see, we're a little light on attendance for the Select Board, but we do have a quorum. Mr. Lowe and Ms. Angelides are not with us this evening, but we do have a quorum. On tonight's agenda, we have, I think, the last of our, hopefully, the last of our interviews for board appointments, and then we can make some appointments at the next meeting. We're also going to be approving, which is our big item, the bond purchases for our DPW facility that was put out, and also some review of our finances with our quarterly audit, quarterly finance meetings, finance reports, and other reports that we will have, primarily though it's a review of our bond purchases and acting on some requests for block parties and liquor licenses. So with that, I just have two announcements. The first announcement is that next Monday evening, that's August 27th, here in the Room 815 at the high school, but it's also gonna be televised on Long Meadow Cable TV, the Select Board and School Committee will jointly be interviewing candidates for, to fill the vacancy on the School Committee. There are five candidates: Heather Goldstein, Jeffrey Klotz, James Ryan, Jill Shaw, and Armin Ray. Those interviews will start at seven o'clock, and the process we have agreed upon will be a three-minute statement by each one, followed by questions from the combined group of Select Board and School Committee members. There will not be an appointment next week, as per our bylaws, we will wait a week, and then on, it's actually Tuesday because the Monday is Labor Day. On Tuesday, I believe that's September 4th, there will be another joint meeting of the School Committee and Select Board, at which point, an individual from that group will be voted upon and appointed to fill the vacancy. So we'll see you next Monday night. The other announcement is that this Friday evening is the grand opening of the MGM Casino, and in response to that opening, the Long Meadow Police Department will be augmenting its patrols. Actually, they'll be starting throughout the weekend, August 24th through the 26th. They'll have additional staff assigned to both the daytime and evening shifts and midnight shifts. The primary responsibilities, the officers, for this time will be focused on monitoring and directing traffic, maintaining the presence and visibility in the Converse Street and Long Meadow Street corridors, expediting response to any concerns by our citizens, enhanced enforcement of our traffic laws, and accelerated response to any emergencies that may arise. We currently plan on having our traffic routed normally, but should there be a problem on 91 and people start coming through Route 5, we are prepared to make alternate arrangements with the signals on, traffic signals on Route 5. Just for people who may not know, downtown Springfield will be closed to all traffic beginning at 4:00 a.m. on the 24th in the area of the casino, and there will be, also be some enhanced communications between the area police departments and making sure that the traffic goes smoothly. So we wish MGM good luck, and we hope that everything works out for the town. Are there any other announcements by members of the Select Board?
There are two individuals from town who are turning 100, and so they're at the geriatric nursing home, and so some of the members of the Select Board are gonna go by and wish them happy birthday tomorrow, so.
Great, thank you, Tom. Let's see, I think we're gonna, well, we'll see if there are any resident comments. Does anybody have any comments from people who are here? Oh, I think people are here for our Board Committee interviews, and we're gonna go right into that so we can alleviate these people of their need to come by, so, to hang around. We have interviews for, I think there are four boards, but there is a number of people here. If you're present and you are available, Robert Kapner, Dave Marinelli, and David Miller for the Energy and Sustainability Committee, if you wanna step forward. You said David Morse was not gonna be here, that's right?
Right.
Okay, so.
All right.
David, you can come up, yeah, sure, we might as well. Can you just introduce yourself and just to give a comment or two?
Rob Kapner, 55 Mill Road. I've been on the Energy Task Force for about two years, also on the Long Meadow Transitions Committee, and I'm passionate about sustainability, not only in my own life, but trying to help the town. I'd like to try to help the town continue to pursue more sustainable practices. I'm happy to give my time, and I'm hoping for a, I guess, a promotion from Task Force to Committee Member.
Watch what you ask for. David, you want to?
My name is David Miller, 68 East Greenwich Road. I am also a current member of the Energy Task Force and also a member of the Transition Group. Previously, I was involved in the process of getting the Green Communities Act before the town and accepted as a bylaw, and I'm currently working on two projects within the Energy Task Force with regard to energy conservation within the town, both electric and gas, and those projects are continuing apace.
Tom, Richard, do you have any questions?
Yeah. You know, it seems to be constant conversation out there on the solar program, and whether, you know, have a contractor put 'em on, you put 'em on, or whatever, but for a town perspective, do either of you have any feelings on where we should be targeting for the next five years?
And with respect to solar?
Respect to solar, yes.
Well, I'll take a shot at that. There is a program called Solarize Long Meadow that you may be familiar with, and I think, for those who are not familiar with it, it's an attempt by the state to foster residential solar acquisition, and by having a consortium of Long Meadow and Springfield, hoping just with volume to bring the cost down. And I think it's those kinds of processes that should go forward, and we should support. Certainly, the Energy Committee, I think, informally supports that process, and Transition Long Meadow has strongly supported it. So I would say, anything we can do to support solar should be done. I would like to see the proposal that has been previously made of potentially having a larger solar project within the town that could provide solar power, or at least the opportunity to sign on for solar power to the town residents. So I think this could be a double-pronged approach, both residential, private, and town-supported.
Well, and I think the Solarize Long Meadow is also applying to small businesses as well.
How do you feel about our current policies pertaining to solar? Is it up to speed? Do we need to improve them? Do you see any discrepancies?
Well, policy-wise, it's, you know, a little bit as a catch, as catch can. I think there was some disappointment among some committee members with the new high school, and that we weren't able to solarize that as part of that building project. I know the DPW is supposed to be carbon-neutral. You know, one of the things we've talked about, our committee, is working with other committees and building committee on future projects, but it's kind of a little bit like quicksand because the legislation keeps changing, the incentives keep changing, so it's hard to really dig your feet in, you know, with one policy. But I think as a policy or a philosophy, the town should be pursuing solar as much as possible, but of course, it's gotta be economically viable.
Okay, one more, Mark?
Sure, go ahead.
Along the same line, do you have any thoughts on the split between ownership and contractual services for the solar applications, between private ownership?
No, I don't have enough knowledge of how that is structured.
Yeah, between my, putting my own system in or having a contract system that's on lease?
Oh, you mean on your facility?
Right.
Yeah. I don't, I think that's up to the individual. I don't see any difference. There are obviously benefits to owning it yourself, but there are also the detriments of what do you do with the equipment when it runs out of its lifetime, so I don't have an opinion, no.
Okay.
Tom?
Yeah, just, I know that we had a speaker at the Mass Municipal Association Conference who was, made a comment that people who bought their own systems seemed to be in an advantage situation, just, but that's secondhand. Now, you know, in terms of solarizing Long Meadow, you know, I hope the people are out there thinking about the possibility, and so sometimes it's helpful for when people have a rough idea about what it would cost. I know that the number of people who do it will reduce the number of, you know, the costs, but is there a cost range that people should know about, or would that deter people at this point? I don't know, because I haven't heard any numbers.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the size of the project. It's really hard. What we're being told is it will reduce it from 20 to 30% if we get enough people to join, but that's over what it would've been, and I think, again, that depends on your property and the, you know, how many panels you're looking at and whatnot. And just going back to the other question about ownership versus leasing, again, I think it depends on your usage, how long you expect to live in the house. I mean, there's so many different variables, and each company has, you know, they're marketers, right? So they're trying to package it in a way that might appeal to you, but it might not appeal to somebody else, or vice versa.
Okay, thanks. I just have a couple of questions for either one of you or both of you, really, about the committee itself, which has been renamed the Energy and Sustainability Committee. How do you see the charter portion of what I'll call sustainability? I think energy, we've got a good handle on, a history on, but sustainability, we don't. So, Rob?
Yeah, sure. Well, we've, as you're, I'm sure, aware of, we've recently applied and worked with Chief Dearborn about, with the Vulnerability Grant, which will help the town start studying where we're most vulnerable in terms of climate change. So I think that, as that grant matures, there's going to hopefully be a lot of work that can be done there, and I think the committee could, you know, that would be a huge push for our committee.
Dr. Miller?
Yeah, I think the concept of the committee is, number one, that it might be a clearinghouse for all of the town departments to look to in terms of things like solarizing the community, which buildings would get it and so forth. But as far as sustainability is concerned, I think the idea is that there are a number of issues that can potentially come up with regard to flooding, storm water management, a whole host of issues that potentially are going to occur as our climate changes, and certainly, you know, I think we're seeing that. Four of the hottest years on record have occurred in the last five years in the U.S., so I think we're gonna see a lot of changes that have to be met, and the idea is that this committee could be a clearinghouse for each department to look to for guidance and simply coordination with other departments as we go forward.
And bigger towns, a lot of the bigger towns have sustainability coordinators. In the absence of that, I think it will fall on our committee to help steer the town and educate the decision-makers on, you know, to try to make some recommendations and get the expertise and the knowledge that we need for the issues that come up.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. I've said this in the past, and I'll, just so everybody knows, that we don't vote tonight on appointments. We will vote when we've got all the interviews completed, so we'll do one vote, it's probably gonna be, probably not next week because of the School Committee meetings, and vote shortly after that, but thank you both.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yep, Mrs. Reiter, if you don't mind coming up or applying for the Recycling Commission? Just state your name and your address.
My name is Virginia Reiter, 20 Berkshire Lane, Long Meadow, and I'm here to, for my yearly, or third year, I guess. I've been three years on the Recycling Commission, and I'd like to be appointed to that again if possible. The three years I've been on it, I have learned a lot, knew some things before, but learned more about Long Meadow and how it's been handling the recycling and doing education to the residents, and providing programs through, you know, whether it's in Long Meadow Days, whether it's at schools, just this, just, I think, a week ago now, there was a reception for all the custodial staff, to thank them for all the work that they do in trying to encourage recycling. Of course, we have the Swap Shop, which actually, I hate to say it, is probably one of my favorite things to go to, and to work there. I think that it's fascinating, meeting town members that I've known or ones I have never known, and providing some education along those lines. I think there's, I think the Commission has done an enormous amount of work over the three years I've been on it and previously, and I continue to be impressed with wanting to move forward on, you know, different projects, so that the residents are continually educated about recycling and the benefits it has, not just for our community, but in general for Massachusetts.
Thank you. Just, I was just, I was gonna mention that, that there was, last Wednesday was the luncheon, Thank You Luncheon for the custodial staff at Wolf Swamp School. I think it was pretty well received. I was there for, representing the Select Board. I thought it was a great, a great event, that the Recycling Commission, I do have to say, that was sponsored with funds that were provided by Waste Management as part of the agreement we have with Waste Management as our trash hauling firm. Richard, Tom, do you have any questions for Mrs. Reiter?
Just, you know, it sounds like you've done a lot of good things with this committee, and thanks for your time volunteering to the town, and, you know, hope you get appointed.
Thanks, Ben, very active.
Virginia, the one question I have is, that people have asked me, is if the Recycling Commission can make it a little bit more clear for people who don't see the need to get a dump sticker because they really don't go down there, but yet they wanna recycle either button batteries or compact fluorescent bulbs or fluorescent bulbs. We used to be able to go to Brightwood Hardware, which is no longer around. I think we need to make it clearer, and I don't know if we can put it on our website or something where people can go to recycle that. That's just a comment that I've heard from people, everybody saying, now what do I do? Now what do I do? And I think the answer is that, because I was talking to Erwin Pers at the meeting, and he said, for now, go to Car Hardware.
Car, I was just gonna say that, yeah.
Down in Enfield, which is the successor to Brightwood Hardware.
Yeah, it is, it is, and that has worked. I've taken some, I mean, I have a dump sticker, and I'm down at the dump a lot, but I've taken things also down to Car Hardware, and they're very receptive.
Great, okay, well, thank you, thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Can I call Dr. Steve Steiner, who's applied for a position on the Tree Commission?
All right. Steve Steiner, 82 Williamsburg Drive. I would like to apologize for missing the last meeting. Just.
As a penalty, you may be put on for two terms.
So you are not currently on this?
No, I have not been on any committees in town.
So the question comes up is why? And thank you. Or maybe thank you.
I'm interested in plants and trees. A friend of mine is on the committee and said, I should be on the committee. It sounded interesting, and I don't know that much about it. I know that they have to do with deciding which trees get taken down. Trees used to be planted in this town on the tree, on the tree belts. It doesn't seem to happen anymore. Maybe we could start doing something like that again.
We actually, just a comment, we have scheduled on an October meeting, Mr. Marinelli, who's the Chair of the Tree Committee, to talk to the Select Board about things such as that, so.
I presume I'll find out a lot about that at our first couple of meetings. Mr. Marinelli is the one who asked me to join. I don't have any conflicts of interest. I don't have a tree cutting service or...
Always helpful.
Or nursery.
Any questions, Richard?
Yeah, full disclosure, I think Steve does have a greenhouse at his house, so there could be a, you know.
He's also a gardener with that.
He's also a gardener, so.
Down at the community gardens, right?
But no, he is, I can testify to, he has a phenomenal interest in plants and how they interplay with our society. I think he would have a nice dimension to the Tree Committee.
Right. Tom, any questions?
Yeah, I actually, I just received a letter today, a person asking about a tree on 90 Colony Road. This could be your first assignment.
Not until he's appointed.
I'm not on the committee yet.
I'll give you this in hopes that you'll get good news.
Debbie should give it to him.
But the, let me give you this.
They wanna cut down?
No.
Oh, they don't wanna cut down?
They want to stay.
Oh, okay.
They wanna know why this healthy oak tree, because it's difficult for, you know, when people look at a tree, it's hard for them to know, is this thing really safe, or because it's been here hundreds of years, you think.
I know a fair amount about trees, but to tell you whether the inside is rotten or not, I really, I don't know if I'm quite the man to ask, but I will take a look at the tree, and I'll mention it at the first meeting, if I get appointed.
Well, I appreciate your attitude, Steve. That's a good attitude.
I think we had a hearing this morning, so.
Oh, I missed it.
Yeah, it's okay.
That's because I missed it.
Probably somebody already objected.
Perhaps. Do you know about the tree?
Maybe.
Colony Road?
Yeah, there's an objection in writing, so it has to go to the Select Board.
Oh.
All right.
All right, that's your answer.
Wow.
There it goes, okay. Thank you, Steve.
This is what you're getting into.
We'll let you know. Why don't you give him that over to Dave and let him worry about it?
Your first official.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Dave, before I do, I'd like to just call Michael Minchin. Michael's even patiently waiting, and you're applying for a position on the Zoning Board of Appeals, so.
Reappointment.
Reappointment, right.
Reappointment. Mike Michon, 101 Hopkins Place, looking for reappointment, zoning board. Had been on the board for the last three years, and it's an enjoyable position, helping our people, our community navigate the zoning and zoning bylaws, which are, can be challenging.
Yeah.
Richard, do you have any questions?
No, 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 thank.
No, I just appreciate your willingness to continue to be on this committee, because it is a tough decision when people are looking at zoning issues and, you know, they, you know, we always balance out, you know, between like, well, we like things the way they are, and then, well, this would be progress, and so you're in a really unique position here at both sides of the argument.
It's very personal sometimes.
Michael, one of the questions, just for people here who may be listening, is one of the questions we get is, you know, the propensity for the ZBA to approve, you know, a change to what's already a non-conforming, you know, a non-conforming structure, especially somebody who has a rotting, non-conforming porch that they wanna replace and put back their porch. What is the, you know, kind of the approach that the ZBA takes when somebody has something that, it's not conforming now, but all they're trying to do is get what they had?
It's pretty much just, you apply with a set of plans, and as long as it, you know, fits within our bylaws, you know, it's really, it's approved.
So people don't need to fear the fact that they live in a house that's old and currently non-conforming?
Correct, unless they wanna do something that goes outside, you know, the envelope, then it becomes a little bit of an issue, but.
All right, well, thank you, I think that's interesting.
Sure.
Okay, so I appreciate that. We have no more questions. Thank you for coming. We'll certainly let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just call up Dave Marinelli, who's actually applying for a position on the Energy and Sustainability Committee, which is why you're here tonight, not to talk about the Tree Committee, so why don't you just give us a summary of why you're here?
Well, I'm currently on the Historic Commission and the Tree Committee, and I think the Energy and Sustainability Committee is a great tie-in to those two other committees. It may not be obvious at first glance, but, you know, if you think about the trees we have in town and how they're historic, and how they shade the houses and provide efficiency for cooling in the summer, I think, you know, things are all sort of tied together. And I know Dave Miller, who's been on the committee, he is the President of the Colony Hills Association, I'm the President of the Glen Arden Association, which are the two neighborhoods in town that own and maintain our own streetlights, and so that's another tie-in and area of interest for me. I've had some experience, unfortunately, dealing with the utility company. Whenever the lights go out, I change the bulbs myself, and, you know, I'm retired and I can do it, and I like to be able to leave Long Meadow better than I found it if I can.
Thank you. Questions, Tom?
No, but that's a nice connection, because, yeah, these deciduous trees that are so great at cooling everything, and then, when their leaves fall, then all the sun warms up the homes. I mean, I think a lot of people don't think about that, but that's a, you know, that'd be a great contribution.
It's the oldest green energy we have. It's, you know, it cools in the summer and lets the sun in in the winter. It's a fabulous resource. We've got, you know, since I've been on the Tree Committee, I've learned about some historic elms that we have in town. I never realized we had over 100 elm trees in town, some of them 45 inches in diameter, and I think we need to protect those trees and broadcast the fact that we have them. It's, you know, it's great for our property values. People love seeing the bucolic scene in Long Meadow, and we have some challenges, but I think we can meet them. We've got a great crew.
Richard, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you, David, I appreciate you coming in. I just wanna say, I gave you some bum information about the dates of our meeting for this, to talk about trees.
Oh.
So I'll send you a revised date, but our meetings, the date I gave you wasn't the scheduled meeting for the Select Board.
Okay.
But I think it's, Debbie, when do we meet in October? Do you remember the dates?
Second, is it the first or second?
The first, I think.
He's the first.
Yeah, it's the first and the...
First and third Monday.
Right.
Okay. I'm trying to pull some information together to talk to the Board, and I don't know if this would be interesting to you or not, but what I'm doing is I'm going through the Tree Wardens' reports for the last 45 years or so, and also looking at the budgetary amounts to see what the trend has been for budgeting, for planting and removals, and also how many trees we've planted and removed, and I hope to have all that data together to sort of talk about so that we can get a sense for where we are with our tree canopy.
Great, thanks. So I'll send you a note just to confirm that.
Okay.
We've got you on one of those meetings.
I'll be ready. I wouldn't be ready tomorrow, but I think I could be ready by October.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, bye now.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is for any Select Board comments. Richard, Tom?
No.
Okay, great. Paul, you're filling in for Stephen. I will mention that Mr. Crane is, unfortunately, is called out of town to a funeral, and that's why he's not with us this evening. Paul Festerzick, though, is prepared, I believe.
I have three very quick things. We talked about the buildings and potentially putting solar types of facilities on, or solar type of material on a couple of those buildings. We did have a report that came back and found basically three buildings in town that would be feasible to have solar put on their rooftops, and this is one of them, the high school. The DPW is certainly the next one, is it being built? And the third one is the Fire Department. So that information just came about, and I think Stephen is pursuing to see exactly what it might be to, you know, actually make that a reality. I just wanna let the Board know that I've been, ran into a few, and Cheryl probably knows this too, ran into a few roadblocks with the State Retirement Benefits Trust Fund people with regard to the transfer of our funds. They sent me a new requirement that has not been satisfied at this point in time, and it's basically just having you folks sign off on the actual trust documents.
Okay.
Inasmuch as I said that you folks have been informed about this whole process, they're looking for, at this point in time, they're looking for a formal approval, I will get those documents to you folks for the next meeting, but unfortunately, that now is going to start a whole another 90-day waiting period for us. You know, I asked the gentleman, where is this in writing, in any of the documents that he had provided me earlier, and obviously, there were no... And obviously there were no comments or no requirement to do such, it's something that their legal counsel has just come up with. So our representative down there is fighting it and wondering, you know, if we can get a reprieve from that, otherwise.
Can't even give your money.
Right, right, you can't even give your money away, but otherwise I will have those documents before you for the third. And again, it's just to make sure that, you know, you folks have actually formally accepted the irrevocable trust funds and other documents.
I thought we had a vote though, Paul, to, I'm almost certain.
I think you folks voted.
We didn't sign any documents.
And everything like that, but as far as the actual trust, irrevocable trust, so, like I said, our representative down there is trying to fight this a little bit for us as a new requirement. And again, he apologizes, but, you know, their counsel is making them jump through this, having the town of Long Meadow jump through this little hoop. So it's going to, it could potentially postpone our sending them the investment money in their 90 days. Lastly, the appointing group to the finance committee made two new appointments to the finance committee. First appointment was Eileen Moran, she's a CPA and she was appointed for a three-year term just last week. And the second appointment is a William Welsh. William Welsh is an attorney, currently he's a deputy general counsel and compliance officer for one of the financial groups in the local area. And those two would be, they were appointed through, both for three-year terms going through June 30th of 2021. So I think that will add a lot of brain power to the group at this point in time and bring upon some new eyes and some new ideas into the group as that group moves forward.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Paul on his comments tonight or anything else that was in the?
Well, the town manager. I just, I wanted to congratulate Andrew Crer on becoming a scholar of the road. He graduated from the Bay State Roads sort of academy and so it's great. Person who's in charge of our roads know that he's been, you know, reached that goal. And I guess the other thing would be, Paul, you know, there's, with the OPEB meeting, I'm going to be attending the next one, so.
Did you open that meeting or the Scanty Valley meeting?
Oh, maybe Scanty Valley.
Yeah.
Because I'm taking Marie's place on that.
Right, right.
So could you just make sure that I get an email on that?
Sure. I believe it's the first week of September, but I will, I'll make a note to get you that information, Tom.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure what date exactly in that first week.
All right.
But I'll let you know.
Yeah, thanks, I usually need a little notice with my schedule, so, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, you know, we had our normal list of town managers' reports. I encourage people at home who may not look at those, each department had to write some monthly report and they're pretty thorough with covering the issues of the departments. And so if anybody has any questions, they can certainly look through that or ask us about them. Next item is an approval of minutes of our August 6th meeting.
Some of.
Seconded.
Motion made in second, any comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving minutes, votes three to zero for the minutes, thank you. And we want to move up just so we can deal with some block party approvals. We have a block party approval request for Chatham Road for October 7th with a rain date of October 14th. Is there a motion?
Place a motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
Comments, all in favor, vote is three to zero. Block party for Farmington Road for September 13th with a rain date of September 16th. Is there a motion to approve that?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, any comments, all those in favor, votes three to zero. And there's a block party approval for Pleasantview Avenue and Field Road on September 22nd with a rain date of September 23rd, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Any motions made in seconded, all in favor? Motion passes three to zero. We also have been asked to revise the rain date for the Ellington Street block party from, well, the party itself is, I haven't figured this out, September 19th with a rain date of September 15th. So I guess they're going to know if it rains, if it's projected to rain, they're going to hold it or. Ah, not, oh, so September 8th with a rain date of the 15th, okay, great.
Okay, so moved?
Yeah, seconded.
No, made in seconded, all in favor, motion's approved, thank you. We also have two requests for one-day liquor licenses, both from the Knights of Columbus. One is from the Knights of Columbus for a.
Beer tasting.
Yeah, beer tasting fundraiser on October 20th, which has been recommended for approval by the police chief, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Seconded?
Seconded, yeah.
Motion's made in seconded, all in favor, any opposed, thank you. And we now have one from Knights of Columbus for trivia contest fundraiser on November 10th.
Some moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made in seconded, any comments, all in favor, motion passed. I'll just point out to people who may be questioning, I went and looked, there's a limitation of 40 one-day liquor permits for any organization in a calendar year. And whether it's the Knights of Columbus or St. Mary's Parish, which it's part of, they're well, well below that number. I think they're five or six for the, for the year, okay? I'd like to call up Cheryl Kudnick, our treasurer, just to talk about our quarterly investment report.
Hi Cheryl.
Hello.
Go right ahead.
I'm Cheryl Kudnick, the treasurer collector, and I'm reporting the quarterly investment report for the period ending June 30th, 2018. The town, again, held no long-term investments exceeding the five-year limit and our bank balances were under the $5 million balance provisions. And all banks did receive the highest rating of green with Veribank and our accounts were fully insured and secured. We had two bans come due on May 30th and the, one of them was the amount of $1,148,630 and the other one was for $2,600,000. We renewed the first ban for one year with Sentry Bank at a rate of 2.05% and the amount of $1,290,375. And that was for the fire engine, water projects on Sunset and Brandt Street, sewer projects on Emerson Road, Colton's Place, Hazardville Road, including the Elmwood Siphon and the Sewer North Interceptor. The second ban was renewed in the amount of $4,240,000. $2 million was secured with Sentry Bank at a rate of 1.9% and $2,240,000 was with Eastern Bank at a rate of 2%. This renewal is for the DPW design and construction and they mature soon, which is the 90-day to coincide with the borrowing of the DPW facility. We had a one-year general fund CD mature with Belmont Savings for $1,116,317 at a rate of 1.25%. And we renewed the CD for one year with Sentry Bank at a rate of 2.25%. We moved $4,700,000 from People's Bank that was only paying a rate of 0.76. $3,700,000 was transferred to Adams Community Savings, $1 million was transferred to Belmont Savings and the rest of the $1 million was transferred to Country Bank. And all these banks were paying a rate at the time of 1.5%. Towards the end of the quarter, several banks have increased their interest rates. East Boston increased a couple of times from 1.5% to 1.6% and is now paying 1.91%. TD Bank increased claims trust account from 1.2% to 1.55%. And People's Bank, to stay competitive, changed our depository account to a commercial indexed money market account that now pays a rate of 1.87%. And that started the beginning of July, also with Adams Community Savings increasing from 1.5% to 1.77%. And United Bank increased from 0.85% to 1.88%. The next, the net decrease for this quarter of $731,500 was a result of the schools' balloon payroll checks in June and warrants payable. As a treasurer, I will continue to seek the best possible rates, fund the payroll and warrants payable from bank accounts earning lower interest rates when possible. And I will continue to monitor accounts and move funds available to achieve the highest rates while continuing to practice safety and liquidity.
Thank you.
Okay.
Questions, Richard?
No.
Tom?
No questions.
I just have a quick question, with apparently interest rates that were being paid on CDs and deposits going up, the question is, does that have any impact on our current budget, projected revenue for, I guess that's under a miscellaneous revenue system?
I think it's going to have an impact on both sides of the coin. We certainly have a budget for the interest that we're paying, but as far as the interest that we're expecting, I could easily raise that projection. I mean, we're probably going to be, these rates are near double from what we were getting a year ago.
Yeah.
Even with the continuous increase in FY '18, I believe that we exceeded our budget by, you know, 33% or so, quite honestly, on the interest revenue. So there is an opportunity, if need be, to increase that, absolutely.
And I don't know if it was in this report or one of the other reports, I noticed that you would mention something about, Paul, about the CD that we had our OPEB money in. We weren't going to roll, now, are we now going to roll that over?
No, we would expect that the rate of, the average rate of return from the state retirement benefits trust fund is far greater than still these CD rates.
Right, but because there might be a 90-day delay, would we invest it somehow for another 90 days?
I don't think when we do a 90-day renewal that these rates are as attractive as when we do the year renewal.
Not for the short term, I don't usually get good rates for short term.
And we have pretty decent money market returns, so we can keep it liquid. We might lose a couple of basis points, but I think in the long run, we're probably better off keeping it in a money market, keep it liquid and then when we can move it, to move it at that exact time.
OPEB, I mean, we have money with MMDT and OPEB and they're paying 2.08% right now, it's probably higher, I haven't, I didn't look today, but they're usually going up pretty quick.
All right, all right, thank you, thank you Cheryl, appreciate it, no other questions. Paul, we're going to go right to the audit compliance report.
Okay, the audit compliance report, progress is not as much as I had expected or would have hoped to have been over the last, I believe this was last done in April. Just a couple of roadblocks, but also it's a busy time of the year, once you get past town meeting with closing out, beginning to look at the closeout of the books and, you know, opening of the new books, vacations and just year-end stuff. But anyway, there were, I think, four or five comments that I had updated that were kind of still active. One dealt with the segregate, this is number two on the audit compliance report, is the segregation of non expendable and expendable trust funds. Basically, we have not completed that review, we are not able to locate, quite honestly, many of the original trust fund bequests. A lot of these are well over 30 years old and they were set up as such when I walked in the door back in 1987. And without any documentation to change them, we would probably have to leave them as is, as far as the amount that's expendable. And then the remaining amount is being unexpended, I should say, to keep the balance, whatever we have is unexpended and then have the remaining amount as expendable. So with that regard, we're still working on that and we hope to have that done by the time we close out the books, which will take place in another two weeks or so.
Can I just ask a question about that, Paul, just to clarify? So the concern by the auditors were that somebody gave the town $5,000 and we were trying to figure out whether it was a $5,000 endowment, don't invade the principal, use the interest.
Exactly.
Or if they could use that, use the whole $5,000 and we just don't have the records for, is what you're saying?
Exactly, exactly, a lot of them are scholarship funds for the school. And again, we've just been unsuccessful in locating them. Like I said, many of them were on the books when I walked in the door 30 years ago. So, I mean, I have the most latest ones and the biggest ones that are really involved with the council on aging. I have, you know, I have a few of the old, old ones too, but there's just got to be so many of them, there's just not one location where we have them all in one location. If we find them, we will put them all in that location, we'll make the adjustments, but in the absence of any type of document to change them, we're going to keep them as is.
Do any of the families exist still in town to go back and see if they have any information?
I don't recognize any of the names of the families, I don't know, a lot of them are, you know, the class of blah, 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 you know, there's a lot of them in that regard. You know, I, we, the town accountant has spoke with Tom Mazza about these, you know, what records do they have and kind of were, many of them were just coming up empty.
Okay.
So as you can see, it's a low priority in order to get this done, it's not going to have any grave effect on the town's finances.
Well, the money's all restricted, so it's not like you can go spend it on other things anyway.
Right, right. The next comment I had was on number four and it dealt with receipt logs, basically down at the DPW was the main comment. The auditing or the accounting department did do audits, we did specifically the DPW, fire, police, health, building and the parks and rec department. They do have the proper documentation, the proper forms in place and the proper documentation with regards to all the turnover sheets and their handling of the cash. And making sure their cash receipts match up with the turnover sheet. So we are content with what we found in those departments and I think that one, we can also put to rest. We will probably do these audits regularly at a, probably about a once-a-year basis to make sure that documentation is properly had within the departments and properly maintained.
When you say receipt log, is that an Excel sheet log or is it handwritten?
Departments, different departments use different things depending on the number of receipts, but the biggest factor is that the receipts need to be numbered sequentially, obviously. And then we're able to go in and on such and such a date, if you turned over $100 or $120, we're able to match up that $120 to, you know, receipt X, Y and Z through, you know, ZZZ per se. That's the biggest thing that we need to do is match up those receipts. And then, you know, the next one obviously would, if they make a turnover sheet a week later, we would then look at the next set of receipts, add those up and make sure. So it's kind of a checks and balances and what they're writing receipts for to what they're turning over.
And is, so is this, I guess I'm wondering how much computers help us in this process and if we are able to, do we need to scan some of these receipts or?
Well, if they have it on a spreadsheet, what will be nice is, and some do, don't get me wrong, some do, like the DPW does, they would probably have a spreadsheet, again, I didn't go down and do the auditing, but they're going to probably have a spreadsheet, identify the receipt number. They're going to have a receipt number, you know, start with one and go to five, they're going to have a dollar subtotal and then they're going to have a turnover date. So it's probably all done with the addition right there on the spreadsheet to the total. And then we're able to look at the documentation that they sent to the treasurer collector's office and make sure that total jives. So, you know, spreadsheets do make it a little bit easier, but they're not the big catch-all for some of the smaller departments. The building department is another one that is going, they have a, I forget what the software system is, but they also have one that generates the receipts numerically automatically, which they use, it's right on the permit that they issue. And again, it's just a matter of checking sequentially, making sure that all the receipts are turned over, making sure the numbers jive with the receipts.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Number five dealt with the, the town accountant actually doing a double check on the bank reconciliations. The bank reconciliations are done within the treasurer collector's office, they sign off on them, they perform them. The auditors made a recommendation that somebody in the town accountant's office, just on a periodic basis, review the work of the treasurer collector's office. We have not gotten around to doing that as we had hoped to. We will, again, attempt to do that, get on a system where we will at least hit every account, every bank account that they have a couple of times a year. And again, it's more of a review of work that they're already performing. The audits are done on June 30th by the auditor minimally. This is just another set of eyeballs that are going to be going over the reconciliations basically on a monthly basis. Again, not where we'd like to be, but we would hope to have a lot of this done by the time we close out in a couple of weeks. Number six. Number six actually dealt with us hitting the tax rate, tax rate ceiling with regard, actually, I should say that to some degree. It really dealt with the appropriation, that how much the general fund subsidizes the solid waste recycling. And I know that the tax rates task force will probably be reviewing this, because as we get closer to that twenty-five dollar tax rate, and we have a potential, or there are ideas to shift over to the fees, it would have an impact. You know, we could further discuss this during the FY twenty process, but historically, the budget for the solid waste recycling center has been about funded by about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of their own revenue, and anywhere from eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars out of tax revenue. The auditor's question, given those imbalances, that should we really be treating them as a enterprise fund as opposed to just a, an operating department under the general fund, was really what they were after. You know, the question would be, at some point in time, if we get to a point where we do have to raise fees and the balance may level out, probably not in the near future, if that's something that we look at. And again, as I said, the tax rate ceiling committee will be looking at fees and rate structures for the, for the Prop two and a half levy limit, just something that'll keep on their radar screen. So we've kind of addressed a little of it, not made a decision, but it is kind of an ongoing question. Capital assets, they've asked that we send out what we have, what we have recorded on our spreadsheets, just to get a, an update by every department who has capital assets. We used to do that a few years ago, for some reason, the process has been dropped. We just need to get that back going again to make sure that we actually have a match between what the departments have itemized and what we have. They should match already, because basically what we do is take the information right off our expenditure, our expense ledgers, and our insurance policies, so that if there is something purchased, as an example, a new vehicle, and something taken off, we do that just through the insurance policies. We will add that on, because the insurance policy, obviously, will have a new vehicle, or if we see an expenditure for something else, repairs to a building, so on and so forth. Again, we'll take that right off the expense ledger, and we'll add it into our ledgers. But this is a checks and balances between the departments and then the control account, basically, that we have everything. It might be a little bit of the, of the smaller odds and ends that are not depreciated, that, you know, have gone through the wayside over the years with us not doing this. So it is something that we do wanna get back on track with. And I think those were the comments that I had updated. I think all the other, all the other seven or so, or in total, seven audit corrections or audit findings from the two thousand and seventeen audit have been rectified, and we just need a little more cleanup to finalize those that I just mentioned.
Paul, do you, do you review this progress in between our quarterly reports with the audit committee at all? Or with the auditor, or somebody else?
I send it to them. Basically, they get this also. They have a person on the audit committee who is the liaison, who actually has the responsibility to review this. So if I haven't already, I'm not quite sure, I think I have already sent it to them, but I will make sure that they have it, and they actually report on it to the full committee at the next meeting after they get it.
Okay, great.
So Paul, this is the second year we've worked with this auditor, right?
We've had them for one full year, we are beginning our second year. FY eighteen will be the second audit that they're performing.
Because it seems like they're catching some things that, like you say, some of these trust documents have been around a long time, and nobody's really addressed it in the past. So, I mean, so your sense is they're a pretty good auditor, sure?
Oh, I don't have a problem with them, yeah, I mean, they are finding what I will say are small issues that could certainly lead up to big issues, if not rectified. So in that regard, it's good, it's another set of eyes, they're looking at different things like any other auditor would. And again, I think that they are finding a lot of little small things that we're just, you know, we need to just improve on, that's all.
Clean up, okay, good.
Yeah, Paul, what are you actually accounting for on your inventories, what level?
We have two levels. We have the capital level of the twenty-five thousand, and we also do the non-depreciable. Those we define as depreciable, we actually do a spreadsheet to take depreciation off. And then we actually try to do everything over a thousand dollars on a non-depreciable scale, just to have the smaller stuff in some type of inventory, just so, again, it's not disappearing on us, kinda thing. So we have two levels.
Okay. Do you have any code system, barcodes, that's your issue?
We do not have barcode system.
So it's just physically checking everything?
It's basically an inventory that's taken once a year. I mean, to some degree, it's taken once a year. I mean, we tried to update it with inventory changes that we know about. Again, purchase of vehicles comes through the office, we'll add those. But when it comes to like the DPW or a major, I'll take the library windows that are gonna happen, you know, over the next fiscal year, you know, we would put that on the inventory as an improvement, probably at the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
So it's just not a perpetual one, is the way I guess I would portray it to you.
Yeah, I was looking at the loss control aspect of it, you know, even getting down below a thousand dollars on equipment and tools and stuff like, you can, obviously, you can have pilferage.
Right, and we did try to keep, like I said, we do try to keep that other one active, because it's exactly that, it's, you know, missing the leaf blower to a certain degree, or the lawnmower. Just certain things like that.
Yeah, a lot of items blow a thousand dollars, can disappear pretty easily.
When you get those industrial strength ones, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so again, we do try to that, like I said, we do have two levels. One is, we'll hit our books, we'll hit the financial statements, and those are the depreciable ones. And then the other ones is for our own internal control stuff.
We've never seen anything come before the board, though, at the end of an inventory, given a status of the inventory, and how we're doing, is that?
When you say how we're doing, I mean, I can give you the report at the end of the fiscal year, but when you say how we're doing...
Well, I used to do inventory every year, and, you know, it was hard to find everything every year. There was a, there was a given amount of loss that took place.
And we're relying a lot on the departments to fill in the blanks. We actually don't have the staff to go out and...
Oh, no, no, they, we, staff, we did our own inventories too, but we had to sign off on them.
Right, right, and the department would do that.
Yeah.
But as far as a surprise check on those inventories, the auditors might do it during their internal control procedures, and just checking things, but we don't have the staff to go down and really, you know, show me the model four, four, two, oh, one, you know, lawnmower that you have. You know, that's the type of...
Maybe a good opportunity for a VIP volunteer program.
I was, I thought you were mentioning some other type of person that you were giving...
Yeah, spot audits can be very effective, especially people understanding.
Right, and the auditors, actually, the auditors will do that. I mean, they normally pull out invoices, and they track those invoices. If there's something of value that is purchased in any department, they're gonna have somebody who goes over there and walks over and asks this question, please show me this.
Okay, so we're doing pretty good?
I would think so. You know, again, it's not perfect, but you could spend a lot of money trying to make it perfect, and it wouldn't be worth it.
I used to be able to clean up my inventory pretty good if we had a fire.
I'm not going there.
Paul, I guess my question is, is twofold. One is, you know, do you, do you measure the accuracy of this inventory? In other words, we're ninety-eight percent accurate, ninety-nine. And the second thing is, how many years does it take for you to not find something before you write it off? Are you obligated to do it if you don't find it once, or do you wait till you don't find it twice?
Well, we would write it off if we didn't find it the first time.
But then you wouldn't look for it the second time, even though it might be...
Well, you're right, we probably wouldn't look for it. But again, I would hope the department head would be looking for it. The accountant's office doesn't own much property or have much property. It's really if, you know, some, I almost say holes, because maybe I don't know who's really gonna take fire holes, but somebody could, and try to sell it. But it's those types of things that the department head should be really watching afterwards.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Paul, thank you. The next item on our agenda is to prove the, approve the bond purchase for the DPW, and for people who have watched our select board meetings in the past, realize that about a month ago, we went through a review of the options for funding the DPW. Basically, how do you wanna pay out the, pay out the interest and principal? And the select board chose one of the options and sent Mr. Pasterzak and our bond agent go out and sell some bonds. And so, Paul, I don't know if you have a report on that, but we do have, for people who are watching, quite specifically prescribed motion, it's a seven part motion that we need to make, that we will be reading, and if nobody else has it, and you know, Tom, I can see you've got it up open. You start there and go through it, but Paul, why don't you start before?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make a couple comments. The, you know, the town sold last Tuesday twenty-two point two million dollars worth of bonds, covering two basic projects, the DPW project and the Dwight Road DIF, per se, the district improvements. When I was here a month ago with Clark, we had done a presentation, and we, you know, we tried to get a, an idea of managing the tax rate, so on and so forth. And I'm just looking at one of Clark's older, older workup that he had done, and I think it's probably reflective in some of the numbers that he had, again, presented a month, or four weeks ago. And he had used a true interest rate over the life of the twenty-year bonds, they're both twenty-year bonds, of roughly about three point three percent. When we sold those bonds last Tuesday, the actual interest rate over the life of the bonds actually was down, so we did a little better than we had projected. We just got, the true interest rate was just over three percent, three point zero two nine percent. So we did a little better, and it does have some impact on the debt service projections that were made. If you went back and looked at what Clark had come up with back four weeks ago, under the hybrid method, and you compared them to the actual debt service that was prepared with the sale of the bonds, we're gonna find that the first nine years or so are very, very close to what he had projected. Most of them go down slightly by one or two thousand dollars, a couple of them go up slightly by a thousand dollars or so. But it's not until the year two thousand and twenty-seven that we start to see the big change from what he had projected to what the, the actual sale had come to. Here, from the year two thousand and twenty-seven through the year two thousand and thirty-seven, which is, there's only one more year, well, there's a couple more years beyond that with payment, but we have big gaps of about thirty and forty thousand dollars that the town will be saving once we get to that point in time. So, well, thirty or forty thousand dollars, it does sound like a tremendous amount of money, and it is a tremendous amount of money when you add it up over nine or ten years. It will have an effect about, basically, one or two cents on the tax rate. So it's not gonna have a huge impact when people are looking at their tax bills in a number of years from now. But, you know, over the life of the bond, there's a tremendous amount of savings from what was projected, and I know they're only projections. So, other than that, Mark, you had asked me a question about how the money that we bonded on the DIF had basically compared to projections, and, you know, the debt service, and what we're, when will the Town of Log Meadow maybe start reaping some benefits from that whole project? I'm gonna say that we could potentially be reaping benefits in FY two thousand and twenty, when that project is complete and it's fully valued. We valued that project in FY nineteen, I believe it was roughly about four point two million dollars. And at four point two million dollars, we tried to capture a hundred percent of those tax revenues, which were about ninety-eight thousand dollars, I believe, and we set up a budget for that. But if that project is complete, and the estimate that was, or the appraisal that was given back in March, and if those estimates hold true, that the appraised value of that new building is roughly gonna be twice as high as we had originally projected way back when. Having said that, if we get, and twice as high means it could be valued as high as fourteen million dollars. Fourteen million dollars at an FY two thousand and twenty tax rate would bring in total about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of taxes. The debt service that we currently have just, or will be signing off on are roughly about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So as soon as potentially FY two thousand and twenty, the town could start seeing some of that money. We would take care of the debt service, obviously, that's our number one obligation. But the town would no longer have to say a hundred percent of those additional revenues would have to go towards the debt service. We could probably do sixty or seventy percent, and we could probably, the general fund could reap some of the benefits of a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at times, very quickly, which, again, I think is good news for the town.
Right, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions, Paul, about this? Okay, we're gonna go through a fairly lengthy series of sections of motions, and I don't know, Richard, if you don't mind, Tom's got it up in front of him.
Got it.
We're gonna move that.
So we start here, you know, I voted that the sale...
Move, you know, you gotta move that.
Move that the sale of the twenty-two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar general obligation municipal purpose loan of the twenty-eighteen bonds of the town dated August twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen, the bonds to January, to Janey Montgomery Scott LLC at the price of twenty-three million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six and fifty-seven cents. And accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on April first of the years, and in the principal mountains, and bear interest in respective rates as follows.
And you can, I think you should reference the table that's in the document, just as referenced in the table.
Okay, so the table goes from the year twenty-nineteen to twenty-eighteen, and it shows the...
Twenty-nineteen, twenty-nineteen to twenty-thirty-nine.
To, oh, twenty-thirty-nine, and it shows the amount of payments ranging from four hundred and forty thousand dollars in twenty-nineteen to one hundred and forty thousand dollars in twenty-thirty-nine.
No, no, one million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, twenty-thirty-nine is one forty, oh, that, oh, okay, at the bottom of this table is one million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars at a three point five percent interest rate.
This is the second portion of it, further move that.
Further move that, in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution...
Oh, we skipped something here, move up here.
Further voted, that move that the bonds maturing on April first, twenty-thirty-nine, a term bond shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. In the year twenty-thirty-eight, one million, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and twenty-thirty-nine, one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Further move that.
And further move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated August sixth, twenty-eighteen, and a final official statement dated August fourteenth, twenty-eighteen. Official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further move that the board, the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. It's further move that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve, in such forms as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. We further move that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post, post insurance federal tax compliance procedures in such forms as the treasurer and the bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. We also move that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such action and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or by any of them as to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect of the... them as to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect of the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Thank you. Is there, motions been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any discussions about issuing these bonds? The document that Tom read, and thank you, Tom, for going through that, I know it's a lot of things that we had to do there. It is a document that will be signed by the clerk of the select board and be available now so that we can't complete the issuance of the bonds, if that's correct, and we've got about three trees' worth of documents that we're gonna sign. I think we'll probably wait till the end of the meeting to do that, Paul's pulling those together. So, there's been a motion made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? So the motion passes, and we have, have issued the bonds. As I said, this will be signed by our, by our town clerk in the morning, and the bonds, I assume, will then be fully issued, and we'll be getting a check.
Right. What I, I think I failed to mention that we did have eleven bidders, which was quite a, quite a, a good competition to, to the, to the rates, and again, I think we got a favorable rate, but eleven bidders, I don't wanna say it's unheard of, but it is a good amount of bidders and does raise the competition level.
Yeah, and if you didn't catch it, the, the successful bidder was a firm called Janey Montgomery Scott LLC. Not that that means anything to me, but, but there's somebody out there who's, who's buying the town's municipal bonds for the, for this, these two projects. So, Paul, the next thing was a review of streetlight economics, I know that's your thing too, and you're trying to get through the paperwork.
No, I think I'm all set here, I just...
So just as a, as a introduction to this, one of the things that's, at least on my list, and I hopefully on this select board's list, is to review the economics and potentially purchase our streetlights. And for the last eight or nine years, we've been, you know, discussing the potential of, of purchasing streetlights. Commonwealth of Massachusetts makes that permissible. Right now, we pay, we lease the streetlights, we pay a lease fee, we also pay the electric fees for operating the streetlights, and the thought process is that if we purchase them, we save the lease fee, and we can put in higher efficiency lighting in there, so we pay less money to light them. The question that arises is, is the purchase versus lease an economically viable alternative for, for the select board, and so, for the town of Long Meadow? And so I had asked our CFO, Paul Festerzak, to, to take a look at what those economics were, kind of pull together the pluses and minuses, the, what it costs us, and what we, what we would save potentially, or certainly what we, what it would cost us to, to own our own streetlights, and Paul's put together a summary for us. So Paul, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Not an easy topic to decipher, quite honestly. What I found that, you know, once one thing changes and you think you're all set, as you change, as an example, going from an S-one to an S-two rate, which is in there, there's certain other aspects of charges that change, so it, it's kind of like a moving target at certain times, and can be very complicated, and probably, once we get down to nitty-gritty, we'd really have to work with whomever, somebody who knows all the ins and outs of this type of, of this industry, to make sure that the numbers are accurate. But what I tried to do is just prepare you some facts, first of all, and then I tried to, then insert those facts into kind of a pro forma, which kind of did the, the numerics of potential costs and potential savings that might be achieved, so certain payback periods. You know, basically, I'll start off and just go through the facts that, you know, Eversource basically pays the town about three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars in taxes, with, they have valued property of about fifteen point one million dollars. But when we are talking about the poles, lights, and related accessories, we're talking about a property tax of, of sixteen thousand, three hundred. So if the town were ever to purchase these poles, lights, and accessories, that is the lost revenue to the town, and needs to be obviously included in any equation.
You said sixteen thousand, three, that's what...
Sixteen thousand, three hundred, right. And that is based upon a valuation of six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. Actually, there are another seventy-five poles in town, I'm sorry, a hundred and seventy poles in town that are privately owned, that generate about another eighteen hundred dollars. But again, if we don't purchase those, that would still remain taxable income, and we would have no change there. Long Meadow right now pays about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars annually for the rental of the poles, lights, and accessories. So that's what we're paying annually for the so-called lease agreements or rentals. We have annual transmission, distribution charges on the poles. We're paying approximately eighty-six, eighty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars when it comes to those transmission and supply charges on the poles, and that, we are currently paying at an S-one rate as the Eversource defines it. If the town were to purchase the current poles and lights, so on and so forth, we would change over to an S-two rate. And with the S-two rate, inasmuch as you pay the same kind of transmission and distribution, won't you also get charged, the demand charge moves over, where historically that was built into the rental aspect, it is now built into a cost, it comes out of the rental aspect, and we still get charged it. So that's why I'm saying, you change one thing and you think you have it, that it would just move across easily in the pro forma, and again, certain things just kind of change out of, out of the blue, but that's kind of how they work. Just a couple of things that, as far as, as information that was received from Eversource before we get into the actual numbers, and we would have to take this into consideration should we ever want to, should we ever want to purchase the poles, we would also have to maintain the poles, should the lights go out, burn out, anything like that, or should for some reason they get hit by a vehicle in an accident, so on and so forth. That Eversource responded to roughly two-hundred-and-fifty-six streetlight complaints over the last twelve months. So again, we, if we'd have to go out and do some type of service contract with somebody to take care of that type of things. And again, the other aspect of this is, is if we changed over to LED lighting, how much money would we save? And the big thing with the LED lighting is that there are incentives out there. Right now, Eversource alone estimates that it would pay us about ninety-three thousand dollars to purchase the LED lighting. They've estimated the costs of those LED, the transition to the, of the LED lights anywhere from a hundred and fifty-eight thousand to two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, depending on, on, you know, what kind of lights that we put in, so on and so forth. They didn't have a, a great pinpoint number, but they put it in that range for me. And like I said, if we were ever to change over to LED lights, we would get about a ninety-three thousand, a minimally a ninety-three thousand dollar rebate on the purchase of those. What I tried to do in page two is kind of put together a pro forma that would identify what we're currently paying, and then potentially, if we made some changes, what we might be paying, and then what we might be saving in the long run, should we make certain changes. The first column is our current cost, which some of the, some of the amounts I have highlighted. We're currently paying about two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars to Eversource in a fiscal year, covering transmission, distribution, supply, excuse me, and the rental of the poles. We have personal property taxes that are coming back into the, into the town of sixteen three for a net cash exchange, or a net cost to the town of about two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand three hundred. So that's kind of the, the, the barometer of which we're gonna start as we go forward and trying to measure some of these changes that could potentially be made. If the town purchased just the, the poles and left the current streetlight structure, with the current streetlights intact, what would change for us is that we would be paying, we wouldn't have the rental charge anymore, we would still be paying transmission and distribution and the demand charges. That cost would drop down to about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. However, we would lose out on the sixteen three. And what we would have to take into consideration in that, in that purchase is, you know, I use an amortization of ten years for the purchase of the six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars' worth of poles over a ten-year period, and I use it would be an average cost, an average debt service cost of about seventy-nine thousand dollars. I do not have an estimate for annual maintenance cost, or some small administrative cost that would be incurred, but should we do that particular thing, potentially, we would have a sixty-two-thousand-dollar net difference, and, you know, if the maintenance costs for, for a year were less than sixty-two, three, we'd be coming out ahead just with that simple purchase. I tried to take it a step further and then put in what would happen if we replaced all the, the lighting fixtures with LED lighting. The first thing that changes is our transmission and distribution dropped down to about forty-three-thousand, four hundred dollars. You know, it's a remarkable drop. We have a cost, what I estimated the cost to be is a hundred and sixty-eight five at this particular, in this particular pro forma, and I basically took that by taking the average of the range of estimates that Eversource had provided me for the cost of, of the LED lighting. Again, that range was a hundred and fifty-eight to two-hundred-and-seventy-five, and then I subtracted the ninety-three thousand dollar rebate that would come in for a one-time cost of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred. Again, the amortization, the average cost over a ten-year period would be about seventy-nine thousand dollars, and if we did the whole purchase in one year, we would be paying an additional, or we'd be net cash, we'd be out about thirty-eight thousand dollars in that first year. However, I wanted to, because the first year was very rich with the purchase of a hundred and sixty-eight five for the, for the change over to LED, and it's only a one-time cost, I wanted to change that out and look at year number two, when we actually would have that number down to zero and have these, these lights paid off. Again, using the same type of assumptions, and again, these are without maintenance costs and administrative fees, or administrative costs that the town would incur, we would have a net gain of almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, again, that, that hundred and thirty thousand dollars, you know, it seems like it's quite a bit of money, and it actually looks like it, you know, might be the worthwhile path, but, you know, we have to make sure those annual maintenance costs are something that, one, we have the correct service involved should something happen, and, and two, the actual cost to do that. I believe, what I was told by Eversource, there are two communities who have actually made these purchases and are doing this exact project as we speak, the, the communities of Greenfield and East Hampton. So I need to communicate with them to see how they're handling their maintenance costs and see what those costs are. I, I have to believe that they're, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but then at the same time, we'd probably have to have some inventory on, you know, in hand. So, you know, again, I still think we'd be talking tens of thousands of dollars. So potentially, we do have a, a kind of a potential net gain there, which, if my numbers are accurate and my conclusions are accurate, we would have a net gain there, and, and then when we get out to year eleven and don't have the, the debt service, it would be even a greater net gain if, again, we changed, we purchased, and then we changed over the lighting fixtures to LED.
Paul, thank you, first of all, it's a, I know there's a lot of work that came, came in here, so this is, this is pretty good. I just wanna make sure I'm reading this correctly. So you have a year one and a year two with the LED conversion, and can I assume that year three would look pretty much like year two does? And it's not until you get out to year ten that the, that the...
It wouldn't be the year eleven until the seventy-nine thousand dollar drop.
So, so really, you know, it's an added cost of thirty-eight, six the first year, and then we saved a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, if you will, each of the next ten years, or nine years, or something like that. Somehow, we could figure out a way to make that so we didn't actually have to put money in the first year, I would assume, and...
Well, again, depending on if, if, one, could we actually encourage debt service for the LED lights, or, again, we don't have to do them all at once, we can do it over a phase-in period, so, yeah, you're actually right, we could eliminate that thirty-two-thousand-dollar loss by just doing by a two- or three-year phase-in.
And, and I guess the one thing I wanted to look at is, so, in year eleven, that one, one twenty-nine-nine, if I'm correct, gets seventy-nine thousand dollars higher, is that...
Right, you'd be up to two-hundred thousand dollars in the absence of the maintenance costs.
And that assumes that there's, that's at today's electric cost.
That's at today's electric cost, that is correct.
So at today's electric cost, we'd essentially be at, at two-hundred thousand dollars a year savings.
Correct.
Yeah, but that's without maintenance costs in there, too.
Right, absolutely, Richard. I mean, personally, I will say that, and I've said this before, I think the maintenance cost on, on streetlights is akin to, not in the, in the, in magnitude, but the type of thing that we have on our traffic lights. We have an outside firm who takes care of our traffic lights. If a car hits a traffic light, you know, we, we don't do it ourselves, and I assume that the same kind of people who do traffic lights are probably equipped to do streetlights, and I don't know the cost. And we have, you know, not, what do we have, fifteen hundred streetlights? The difference between what we have now and what we might be bidding is, right now, we have incandescent, we don't have incandescent, we have sodium vapor, mercury, mercury, that burnout, and of those two-hundred-and-fifty-six complaints we had in the last six months, I'd venture to say two-hundred-and-fifty of them were probably burned-out bulbs.
At least, sure.
As opposed to a, you know, a car hit the pole and knocked down, the thing fell on its own, and the theory is that with LEDs, you go fifteen or twenty years before these things burn out. And so my hope would be that somebody who comes along and bids on it takes that into account or believes that to be the case, and they bid it appropriately, so I, I, you know...
Yeah, I can imagine, though, minimum service call would be five hundred dollars. I just don't think you're gonna get anything less.
Absolutely, but...
Well, that's just a hundred and twenty-five, just on that. I, my concern has always been, is the infrastructure cost, and the age of the infrastructure right now, and what's the thirty-year projection, just based on what it is, and the interplay between them and all the other public utilities, all of those questions laid down in the mix.
I don't understand what you mean by the infrastructure.
Well, you got seventeen, fifteen hundred poles up there.
Right, okay.
And they're gonna need replacement.
You're, you're right there. You know, at some point in time, there is gonna be a changeover. I don't know what a life of a, of a, of a pole is.
But they do know.
No, I, I understand they do know, and they have, you know, it looks like they have about, if not the poles, the lights, there's also an abandonment fee...
Right.
...that they would be charged to us, too, so, but you're right, they, they would probably have the inventory and, and understand what, what the life is, and how much, you know, all that depreciation and everything and stuff is.
But I wonder if they'll make that information available? Well, you would, you would almost have, mandatorily have to have it available for us to move in that direction. We'd have to know what our outstanding liability is.
I, you know what, I would have to ask that, it's one question, I mean, many questions I didn't ask, but that was one of the many.
Yeah.
But Richard, I think the other question is always the ask of contractors, you know, you know, if we were to write a RFP for maintenance of streetlights, what would it include?
Well, yeah, that's just, that's just one piece, though.
I mean, 'cause you, you know, that you can write an RFP that's time and materials, and you can write another one that, we pay you so much a month, and if we need you, we need you, and if we don't need you, we still pay for it.
I'm not gonna get in a contract with you on replacement of poles without having a total inventory, knowing the age of every one of those poles, like, it's a pig in a poach.
But I would have to think that the life, the life of a pole has to be a life...
Forty, fifty years.
Forty, fifty years, right. I'm just thinking of some of the...
Well, and every one of them is dated out there.
But, but a lot of the poles aren't, aren't Eversource poles, a lot of them are Verizon poles...
Exactly.
...which would get replaced by Verizon, we're not buying those.
Exactly, but, but that's, that's the thing, that's the other parts of this puzzle that need to be brought together. And, and I agree, Mark, the, the light-wise, it looks good, but let's expand that thing to bring in the maintenance and see what the whole picture looks like.
Right, no, like I said, I, it was a learning experience, I haven't really delved into it that far before this, so getting this far and, and working with, with, you know, Dolly Rohn over at Eversource was very helpful to me on, on getting these numbers, and again, I can ask her these, these questions, and again, I, I think just to get a boilerplate of where we're going, I think this is probably helpful, which avenue we need to take, as an option, and then, again, we can, you know, over time, we just have to fine-tune it to see where we really are.
Be interesting to see with those other towns, how deep they went into it before they bought into it.
Right, right.
How deep, how thorough was their study?
Right, I think Stephen has a contact in, in Greenfield, I think he may know the mayor up in Greenfield, quite honestly, and I've spoken to the finance director in East Hampton when she was in another community, so it's something we can work on.
No, that's a question, Paul, now, this is looking at buying them all at once instead of phasing them in, and, you know, when we had our meeting with Eversource, it sounded like they were making a concession when they said they would allow us to buy it in, you know, phased in in a five-year. So that would be, you'd have to work up a whole new sheet for that.
You would have to work up a whole new sheet, which, right.
And would it make a difference in terms of... And would it make a difference in terms of, like, you know, if you take a loan out to buy the poles, would there be any advantage to taking out, like, three small loans versus one large loan? I mean...
I think what you'd probably want to do, if we're looking at some type of large savings, let's say it was in the $100,000 range, you would probably want to take almost like $100,000 every year. You know, you'd have to upfront the first year and get the project started and just keep on rolling with the savings. So at the end of seven years, you basically have everything done, and that's when you probably would then start seeing the bigger bucks. Instead of the 11-year pay, you know, seeing the big payback in 11 years, once the debt service is done, you would see it in the eighth year, kind of under that scenario. But, yeah, I mean, that's a possibility, too.
Just keep in mind, we also have green community funds that we could apply for that could offset some of these potential, I mean, there's all kinds of options.
There are other grants for the LED lights also through the state.
Didn't we authorize a study? Isn't there a study going on right now?
Well, it's not going on now, but we've directed the town manager to complete a study by the end of the year, so...
Is that going to have, that's going to have ownership and have many spider webs?
Well, I think ownership would be part of it, but it was more of looking at, do all the lights that we currently have, are they all needed? And if they are needed, are they needed at what wattage?
Right. See, I thought it was, I thought it was an inventory of...
Well, it is an inventory, but do we have lights that are too close to each other? We could eliminate one. Do we have lights that, you know, are there certain lights that give off a broader kind of illumination type of thing? So it's very, was broad-based, a lot of the discussion.
They could do an inventory and age, too. I mean, they're at each pole.
And then, are there things attached to these streetlights, like cable wires and everything, and do they get any money from that?
Those are all Verizon poles that have those. And Verizon does, I assume, get money from Comcast, but, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, but...
Well, Paul, thanks for your work.
Yeah, it's just, like I said, it's more of a start, starting point than anything.
But, from my perspective, the numbers say it's worth continuing to talk about and accelerate the discussion to a decision point and moving forward. I mean, if this had come through in saying, you know, you can massage this 12 ways from Sunday and it's at best break even, you know, we'd stop talking about it. But I think, you know, we're talking about, long-term, as much as something less than $200,000 a year in today's dollars of savings.
But we need a lot more answers.
Yeah. So I guess, Richard, the question is, how do we get those answers?
Well, that's what we've been talking about. We're doing, I got somebody doing an inventory out there.
But I think in addition to the inventory, you know, my suggestion would be, we go out and talk to potential vendors of, you know, what's the order of magnitude of a service contract?
That's just another piece of the puzzle. But I'm more worried about the core infrastructure replacement costs, Mark, the long-term, the 30-year liability we place on the community. I can get that other information really quick, and you can, too. A service contract for repair, I mean, anybody can do that, just got a little bucket truck. But your core, the infrastructure core is what scares me, because that's where the real money's at.
Well, that's where the $670,000 lies. It's in the poles and the fixtures, so...
Yeah, how many, how many poles? We got seven?
1,500. There's 1,500 poles that we're talking about.
No, we have 1,500 lights. We don't have 1,500 poles.
I have it as 1,500 taxable light poles.
I thought it was 1,500 fixtures, Paul. There's only about half that are Eversource poles.
I'll go back and check my notes.
See, I thought Eversource, because not every fixture's on an Eversource pole. I mean, the Eversource poles are the ones like on my street that are standalone, those little, you know, 15-foot standalone poles. But the big, what people call telephone poles, they're called telephone poles, because they're owned by the phone company. And there are light fixtures hanging off of those, but they're not Eversource poles.
I get, I'd have to go back in my notes to just verify that.
Yeah, but I know the number was, I thought the number was 1,500 light fixtures.
It used to be, when I was working in that field, they split poles. AT&amp;T ownership, electric company ownership, they just went down the street. It was, they had crazy ways of doing it. They were pretty loosey-goosey on their accountability, too.
I can potentially understand that, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
They understand how big the problem is, too, with all the attachments that are going on this stuff.
Right.
So what's the next step?
So I'd say the next, well, I'd like to propose that the next steps are to move forward on this inventory or audit, I think we called it an audit, rather than an inventory by the end of the year. We want to do that. We also want to, I think, fill in a couple of blank questions, and the blank spaces here are, what's the order of magnitude of a service contract? You know, that's, Paul had that as his, one of his blank space, spaces, and I think, Richard, the question is, what's your blank space, and how do we fill in the...
Right, it's called, what's the total cost of ownership? And that takes into a lot of different variables.
Right, I mean, right.
Including the service, that's a piece of it, yeah.
Right, and I don't know how to go about that.
It can be done. It's gaining up information. It'd be interesting to see what the other towns have done, if they've gone into that detail to look at it for the 40, 50-year run, or 30-year run. I mean, the poles, I mean, these poles aren't new, our town's pretty old.
Again, I would think East Hampton, it would be very similar to Long Meadow in that regard.
Yeah, it's a big program.
Yeah.
So, so Paul, will you and/or Stephen then be contacting Greenfield and East Hampton?
I think when I spoke to Stephen, he said he would contact Greenfield and I would try to get the information from East Hampton.
Okay.
Or at least, you know, he would get a contact from me afterwards, but he would contact the mayor up there, just to get a feel of what they did, how they did it, and, you know, what they're experiencing as we were talking.
So I guess I ought to say, I'd sent everybody a spreadsheet that I did, looking at the numbers from a different direction. I think my numbers were within a couple of hundred dollars of Paul's, so, you know, I looked at it, literally went and analyzed the electric bills that we had and some other proposals we had about LEDs. So the numbers, I think your numbers are as good as we're going to get at this point, Paul.
Right. And again, Dolly was nice enough to get me those numbers. You know, I told her I didn't need exact numbers, ballpark numbers, but she was, you know, the rates are changing as we move, so, you know, there's all those little things that are going to be modified periodically.
Yeah, so, anyway, so, you know, I think it's worth, people hearing that, it's worth continuing to chase this potential benefit, $200,000, even if it's $150,000 a year, is nothing to sneeze at for us long-term, as it goes on forever.
Well, plus, we'd be saving energy, which is always a good thing.
We could save energy right now. That has nothing to do with us taking ownership. We can get those conversions going right now.
But if we, you know, install LEDs, we would reduce the energy.
Yeah, we can do it right now.
Significant. Oh, yeah, I know, we just wouldn't make any savings, yeah.
Why wouldn't you? They've got a new tariff rate.
I thought you said that it wouldn't make a, I was under the impression it wasn't the best way to do it.
No, it, my presumption is, we'll pay less in electricity, but we'll pay more in leasing fees if we have Eversource replace all the fixtures with LEDs, so they'll charge us for the new, you know, so...
I think your study coming back, if it's got a lot of data, it's going to be a good starting place, Mark.
Okay. I just don't want to be here next year this time saying...
Well, we may be here two years from now, but if we're making progress on it, it's what you want.
Right, okay.
Right?
Yeah, I want to do more than make progress on it, because I think it's, to me, it seems like there's people out there who've done it before, and we ought to, you know, understand. The numbers ought to be understandable to us.
I think we need to understand that they understand what they do and what they got into it, too.
Well, that could be.
Yeah.
That could be.
It was one of those surprises in 20 years from now. That's when they line up in front of your house.
They can line up in front of my house all they want to, 20 years from now. Maybe I'll be there, maybe I won't. All right, Paul, thank you very much. That was a great summary, I appreciate it. We had one other item on our agenda, and it was Marie's, it was a plastic bag bylaw review, which we're not prepared to discuss that. It was something being looked at by the Sustainability Committee, and it was in response to a, I won't say a straw vote, but it was a sense of the town vote at the last town meeting about potentially banning plastic bags. So the question is, the next, last thing on our agenda really were subcommittee reports, and I want to know if there are any subcommittee reports. I have two, but one is that the Tax Ceiling Task Force met, I believe, last week and reviewed some of their forward actions and where they're headed, and they really are taking a three-pronged approach, but there's a sense of that group that we need to do whatever is possible to demonstrate that we're taking a look at potential revenue sources. And so they put together a list of revenue items, everything from, are we maximizing or optimizing, or realizing all the taxes that are out there on, whether it's commercial properties or otherwise. Also, looking at potentially generating additional tax revenues from development of areas in town that are developable yet, be they the, potentially the water tower property or others. So they're going to be looking at those issues of revenue. They're also next going to turn themselves to looking at expenses, seeing if what are our expenses and what are options for reducing town expenses in a significant, meaningful manner? And I should probably put the same thing, constraints on the revenue part, because a lot of the things we talked about, the task force talked about in revenue, would do things like bring in $15,000 additional revenue, which, you know, doesn't get us much in terms of buying us another three or four, five years on the tax ceiling. We're really talking about, you know, several hundred thousand dollar kind of impacts that will significantly defer, delay the potential tax crisis if we hit the tax ceiling of $25 without exempt projects. And so they are looking at, will be looking next at potential expenses, but it will also come down to potentially looking at asking the state to review the 19, I think you said 1983, Prop 2 and 1/2?
The first fiscal year was 1982. I think it was voted in 1980, 1981, but it actually took effect in 1980, fiscal year 1982.
Right, so in 1982, Proposition 2 and 1/2 went into effect, and at that time, it set several limitations. One is a limitation on raising taxes year over year based on like-value assessments increases, and the other was an absolute ceiling. At the time, there was a thought, at least in the subcommittee, that nobody envisioned a situation where property values would be stagnant over a 30-year period of time, where taxes would continue to rise. And Paul, I think you're the one who had the statistic that of the communities that are, what, five or eight communities closest to the tax ceiling?
26 out of 30 in Western Mass that have hit or are near hitting that levy ceiling.
So, you know, it seems to be a regional phenomenon based on property values as opposed to anything else. I would, I'll say this, because I say this every time, Long Meadow does have the highest tax rate in the Commonwealth, but at the last time we got data, we were 42nd in the Commonwealth in average tax bill. So it really is a tax rate issue and not a tax bill issue, or not a revenue, not an amount of money we're raising. So the Tax Ceiling Task Force is taking a three-pronged approach, revenue, expenses, and legislative. And I think, Paul, you were there, too, is that pretty well...
Yeah, that's kind of the three-prong approach.
Cover that approach, so continue to report back. I think that was the only subcommittee report I had, is that, Tom, you have any? Richard?
No.
Okay. We have an executive session, I believe we're going to...
Yeah, Jack Egan is expected.
Okay, well, we're going to, we don't need to hang around for folks, we got a bunch of documents we can sign. So I'll just want to give folks a preview of our upcoming, upcoming meeting agendas. We do, we are going to be talking about Stores Library. There's been some discussion about Stores Library and the situation with Stores Library relative to the town, so we covering that, I believe, at our next meeting. Debbie, is that correct? That's on the...
I think so.
Yeah, on the agenda. And so we've invited the chairman of the board of the Stores Library Corporation, as well as some folks from our attorney's office to come talk to us about that. So with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn to enter into an executive session.
So moved?
Well, it's to discuss collective bargaining and our litigation, not to return to open session.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Paul?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, folks, for watching. We will reconvene here next Monday night for our interview of school committee applicants. Thank you again.